All right, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting Tuesday, May 15th, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment. I don't see any public comments. Reading and approval of the minutes, did everyone have a chance to read the minutes?
I'm going to approve. I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, although the favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Eavis?
Excellent. I have a safety committee meeting this week, is that? Yes, and a kneecap meeting Thursday evening.
I will just use my comments to welcome Mr. Prasco. Steve Prasco, he is here on the 10:00 AM. He's with Advantage Computer Enterprises. He helps counties with their IT services. And welcome. We appreciate you being here to visit with us. So I know you've been working with our financial director and IT director to gather information over the past few weeks, so, and our sheriff as well. So I will just turn it over to you to let us know what you found out or what your thoughts are.
Thanks for the invite. As a IT professional, a guy that owns a small IT company, we service many counties. We service them from full service, meaning they have no IT staff. We take them from top to bottom, all departments, to some counties that have a mixture and then of IT and us, and then we have some that have... We've educated people, staff members, department heads, and so on and so forth, to not be IT, but assist us in the service of IT for a county. So this, I came to you or through another commissioner that came and you reached out to, and that's how you got hold of me and my company. Your, how we would integrate or what we would do would be, you know, we're, this is, for me, this is more, are we a good fit for you, or are you a good fit for us, kind of an assessment to be done based on a lot. I think I handed a quote out for like an assessment to be done, and that drove some more information and discovery, which I did do. Yeah, I'm only able to really kind of scratch the services on tech and what you've been deployed with or what's been deployed here. So I did some, you know, 3,000-foot degree looks, if you were on, you know, county population versus employee, how many employees you have versus how much IT, or how much tech you've deployed as far as PCs and servers and things of that nature, just to kind of get a bearing, if you were, on what you have. And so from our perspective, how we do IT for counties is more working ourselves out of work, per se. I know that's probably kind of cliché-ish, but it's, you're never really out of work in IT because IT transitions and shifts so many times. Stick around for three days, it's something new, you know. But our primary goal is reduction of workforce or labor bills, if you were, not to increase. So how we operate is whether we are doing a, I'll give you a couple examples, just so that there's good information and good things to chew on a little bit. We have county entities that we are there once a week. We have a scheduled tech that comes in, and that tech gets to know the staff. Of course, we have a backup for that because you can't just have one guy, guy's gonna take vacation, be sick, so on and so forth. So we'll have one guy in a facility, and the primary process is, we call the day before, is there anything needed for us to be there for? If there is, we go. If there's not, we don't. If there's, we usually have that point of contact, that when we walk in, we have a list that the department heads have been contributing to that list, and when we're walking through departments, we're addressing those issues as we're there. So that's kind of a weekly. We have some counties that they're just need-based. They have a need, they call, we go. We're not there on any scheduled plan. If there's an issue, we come. And so where we tap out is typically, I'll use, we had an account that we were there one, two days a week, went to three days, got to five days, and we ran five days a week for about two years. That's where it's like, okay, now you need IT because we can't, it doesn't make sense to employ somebody from, to contract with me for five days a week. I mean, that's just, your needs are higher than what, you need an IT guy, you know, or a gal, or a team, or whatever. And that's just how our existence has been over time. That's how we function. We, our hours are, you know, I ran some numbers just because I thought, well, we better have something to compare to. So I called and talked to, well, first I called my accountant and said, I never asked you this before, but how many, how many hours are we spending in these locations, you know, because it's usually, doesn't seem like a lot, but maybe it is a lot, I don't know. So for, for what, for our, I pulled two and just did some averages, and we were pulling about averaging, where are you? From a ticket count, about 250 tickets, 250 calls a year. What that, what that amounts to in dollars, if you were taking it from an average perspective, if we, if we're there once a week, if that, you know, you're looking for that situation, that was about a, I think that county, for all departments, was about a $15,000 deal. And I know that's an astronomical low number, but you have to put it in the perspective of working for that county for 26 years, working ourselves out of tech. We don't throw tech at everything we see. We're usually, I'll use a courthouse as an example. District courts, which we service a bunch of district courts in southeast Kansas, we run into the automation of sound systems. And you can go out and buy a $50,000 sound system for a district court and above, and they're touch-based, they're cool as heck, they got a lot of really neat things. But they come at a higher expense, and they come, and if the judge leaves, or the clerk leaves, or that, you gotta almost have an IT guy to function it because it's so automated. We don't do that. This is just a random example. I've got thousands of them, but we go in and dumb it down so that it's functional. It still serves the purpose, it still provides sound to a apartment. We do the court recording, we have our own solution to report foring for that, but we don't try to overcomplicate it because if we overcomplicate it, they need us more. So if it functions right, why overcomplicate it? And so what we run into a lot of times is downsizing. Another example, I ran into, a customer asked me to come in, we did a review, we did the, like I showed you, where we analyzed everything. I went to the director and said, I'm not interested in your business, and he said, why? And I said, because your tech has buried you in technology. I'm just not interested in being your customer because I would have to have two specialists in so many areas to function. And we ended up getting that account, but we ripped out all the technology. I mean, that sounds horrible, but you can over-tech things, and we're not that way. We're a high-tech company, we've been doing this for 40 years. I've been at the helm, or been there 28. I grew up as it came up through the tech and did the teching, and there's just, you can put five tech guys in a room, and they'll all tell you 20 different ways to do the same thing. Not any of them are necessarily right, not any of them are necessarily wrong, it's just a perspective of what that tech individual is comfortable with, what he's good at, what he knows and likes, and things of that nature. And that's where advantage is different. We have a way of doing it that, we do about 20, 25 banks. The only person that ever reviews what I do as a company is the FDIC. In our banks, they come in and they audit us, and they say, okay, let's look at the tech they're deploying, let's see if it measures up. And they audit us, and we pass with high colors. And that's because we don't over-tech things, we have a way of doing things. And I don't know that it's a good fit for your county, or a bad fit for your county, it's just how we do it. And so a typical, I think I mentioned on the phone, a typical contract, you know, for you would be here, if we were here, which I don't even know how it works, because you're already tech-staffed. And so we run into that once in a while, the one kept, the one example I gave you, that tech guy was leaving, and so that individual was looking for another source. So it wasn't real hard to pull his tech out because he was leaving, you know, it was like, well, that's not difficult, you're leaving anyhow. So not necessarily, it's just how we do it, how we do it. So from a, from a numbers game, if you look at the two counties that I pulled, which was Neoshu and Allen, I think you got it, it's me through Neoshu. You're 3% smaller in Neoshu, you're 30% smaller than Allen. I just crunch numbers because that's the easiest way to make sense of it all for me. You have 186 employees, Neoshu is 39% smaller, and Allen's 33% smaller than what Atchison is. So from an equipment standpoint, you have 281 devices, and that's PC servers. We look at three main things, PCs, the servers, and firewalls, and the switches that are making everything kind of work. That's where a deeper dive might change my perspective on what you have deployed, or what makes sense to you. But from an equipment standpoint, Allen, you're 100, you have 113% more equipment than what we see in a smaller county. So it's like, and I think I mentioned that in one of my emails, that it just seems like there's a lot of PCs deployed in a lot of places, which may all be needed and necessary. I don't know and can't really give a grade, or yeah, that's what I would do, or that's what I wouldn't do, because, you know, I don't know how they're being deployed, or why they're being deployed, so on and so forth. But from a ticket count, looking at our, what we get from a ticket count from Allen, you have, you're 356% more tickets, more calls than what we experience in our ticket count. Like I said, we have, if you averaged this, we're 250. This was all comparison to 2022. So we, between those two counties, we averaged 250 tickets. Your ticket count was 1,407. Whether that's because of a dependency on IT that's grown here, because it's like, they're easy to call, they're good at what they do, and you just call them for everything, you know, and you can kind of, kind of create that environment, where it's like, these guys are good, they just, and we experienced that. But when you have a, when you have a drive, for us, like, like I say, Chase County, one of our, one of our counties that we do business with, when we rolled up on them, and they brought everything to us, the whole county, sheriff, the whole thing, which if you go back three years, wasn't the case. Maybe four. Anyways, they wanted a weekly visit. What we were doing was going to go weekly, then monthly, then quarterly. But when you have to pay to get us there, it's like, well, maybe we can see what we don't, you know, should we need this? And they opted to go need, not schedule. And so they start, we start working with those staff, those department heads, well, what's going on? Can you get me on remotely, so on and so forth? But those are, those are just kind of some examples of what I found in just initially looking, looking at what you have going on, and that may be way off in a, I think when I got to sheriff, example of equipment, you had, and I think I replied back, that you had a 2012 server that's, you're physical, but you have four virtuals, if I remember right. And that physical's going to roll out of support before long, that you'll need to address that because of, you know, Windows giving up their support on their product, and you've got to be, that's got to be dealt with from a cybersecurity perspective. I have no idea what you're doing there. We have a, we have a product that we roll out, an MSP product manages entire networks, where it's, we call it tech in a box. It's just watching everything 24/7. So if somebody's knocking on the outside, we know. If something's failing on the inside, we know. If they're starting to get, starting to drop, Windows will tell you there's problems with the server. It'll, you can read the logs, and then it'll actually dispatch us. So we call it a tech in a box because it runs 24/7, because we can't be there 24/7, so that service is. But I kind of went a big circle on that situation, but I just, from a, from a contract perspective, there was, I did want to provide some, something to chew on, let's put it that way. So from an education perspective of what's available to the county outside of just obviously having standard IT, which I don't think there's any way the county can go from a department to none. I think that's not the right approach, from my perspective. More information may tell me differently, but if you take, there's, the way people in my industry bring services to organizations like yourself, they put every device under a contract. So they'll take a PC, and a server, and a firewall, and they'll say, okay, those have fixed costs for support, and they'll do that based on, some will go as far as it even includes replacement. So you would have a, you take the PC count, the heart, and the servers, and everything, you bundle them all together, you assign a value to each one of them, and you say, I'll support your entire organization for X amount of dollars. A contract like that, I don't do that, that's not what I do, because those are extremely expensive, and you usually pay a lot and get a lot less, because the goal of an individual, of a company like that is to not replace, because every time they replace, it costs them, and they're obviously trying to make money off of you. So, but a typical contract like that, if this county was under that, would be about $271,000. If you just took a PC count, and I have that for you, I'll give you copies of this. Because you have 248 PCs, 34 servers, 27 network devices, and if you figured two days a week, you'd be somewhere around over $4 million. For a, so then I took a, and that averages out about 73 bucks of advice. Again, I'm not, I don't have anyone that does that for me. I don't prescribe to that. Maybe I should have, but I don't. The other real thing, if you were just to take the county and say, okay, 248 devices, 248 PCs, 34 servers, 27 network devices, one day a week, based on the averages of an advantage solution, based on the size of this county, I think that looks like about a $66,000 contract. If, if the county were to just sign up on a, well, we're going to bring advantage in one day a week, we have, like some of our other counties that have us there one day a week, like I mentioned earlier, that's about a $32,000 contract. The averages that I'm talking about on the, are based on an aceified network, for lack of a better word. It's advantage deploying the way it does business, which is, like I said before, you put five of us in a room, you have 20 different ways of doing it. But we do it in a sense that we feel is pretty successful, because we've done it for so long, and I can give you countless references of the people you can talk to. And we're here because of a reference. One of the commissioners that you spoke to is, if you go back 10 years, she wasn't a, I mean, the county was a customer, but she wasn't a commissioner. And it took, she takes a little while for commissioners to get to know me, and get to know my company, and know how I do business. Like I said, I don't know that it's a good fit for us, I don't know if it's a good fit for you. I mean, this is so prelims, I mean, early, let's say, put that way. But so I'll give you this, these have the copies of the numbers, and there's the MSP product that I mentioned. I don't know what you guys are doing from cyber, we have a specific way we do that. You guys, you guys may have a better way of doing it. I mean, may have run across something we haven't seen or heard of, and think, wow, that's, I wouldn't mind researching that. But our typical is, we run pretty hardcore on what the FDIC measures us against, and we don't really defer much from that because it has to pass our bank audits, and we have a lot of banks. And so that's kind of me in a nutshell, in my quick assessment in a nutshell of just looking at numbers and percentages, and I don't know where the go-forward from here position is, but I did want to provide some, something to chew on, so to speak. So these are, this is the information we just spoke about.
I have a few questions, if you don't mind.
I love questions.
So first of all, thank you for coming, because I was appreciative to hear other counties and what they're doing, because with valuations up right now, we have to look at our budget and ask hard questions. And one of the things I noticed when talking to other county commissioners was, you know, our budget for IT was over $400,000, and other counties, you know, were not in line with that. So just asking questions and understanding it. But also, I think, you know, the contract for $66,000, although attractive from a monetary standpoint, the aceified network and you deploying that way, if for some reason, say, fast forward, and we decide to work with you, and you do it all your way, and then we don't like you, like, then are we kind of set up in this corner where what's next?
No, great question. And you'll find, so we try to make ourselves vendor-independent. I ran across the city just recently that we just took over, that when I asked for their administration, their admin network, or admin user for the server, and the admin network on the firewall, no one knows anything. And we're not that way. So when deploying specifics to, or technology specifically to accomplish a goal, when we aceify it, it's for, that's just for lack of a better way of terminology. So I'll give you an example. We manufacture our own PCs and servers. That's something that's fundamentally different than a lot of people. And we still have to bid those processes and things of that nature. But we do that by design, because we're really fussy on how we build them, and I stick a three-year warranty on them. And I don't want them back. I mean, if they come back and I got to fix them, now I'm selling them for cost, you know, it's just, it doesn't make any sense. But I do that, so it's my problem. I don't say, well, that's a Dell issue, or that's an HP issue, that's a Steve Prasco issue. And so that's, I, years ago, I was getting beat up by judges, because we were reselling the product, and we delivered, and it didn't work. And we're like, well, we just shipped it direct from the manufacturer, and that's not how they look at it. They look at it like, no, that's you. So we switched that. So for that example, if I go to the servers that we manufacture that's different, yeah, it would tie you into me, but only for a period of three years, because eventually the warranty wears out, and you need to go on. But that would, I would say, would be your diligence to talk to people that have been doing business with 28 years and say, because if I hand you all the keys, make you vendor-independent, whether you use me or whether you don't, does it, because you can take all, I mean, it's like, well, you're going to drive a Chevy now and Ford, still going to get you down the road. But for the server perspective, it's something we do that's definitely different, is, I mentioned this to a commissioner the other day, that we, if I sell you a server, it's in what we call a pool. And that means that for the period of three years that you own your server, I will have an identical server in my facility, so that if in two years, or in a year, you call and say, I just got hit by lightning, we had a failure, whatever it is, when we come, we come with, if I have to replace the whole darn thing, or hopefully just one piece, if there's a failure. So that warranty that we do is completely different than anything else that I know of in the market today. Typically, if you have a failure, you're dealing with the manufacturer, the manufacturer's diagnosing the failure, they're shipping you the product, and you install the product, and that downtime leads up. We're not that way. Our, for critical, now, for servers, it don't matter if they're down for a day or two, there's no need to do that kind of situation, but for uptime being critical, we handle that different. All our servers typically are under that pull agreement, especially if they're critical function. Do they cost a little bit more? Yeah, sure. I'm not the cheapest game in town. Well, and in this case, I'm probably not the cheapest game in the last five towns I went through. But we do good at what we do. So to directly hit your question, if you did aceify it, your way of doing business, it would just be a transition of handing you all that information and say, hey, this just hasn't, this just isn't working. And I'm not, I'm not the guy, nor will I ever be the guy that says, well, I guarantee you we got to change, we're just going to gut this thing, this is just ridiculous. I mean, it's just not, like I said before, we may run into and think, wow, that guy's pretty good. And I've run across those, where you're just like, I think I want to do that too. That's a good idea, you know, and I'll give credit where credit's due, because it's IT. There's, the fifth guy in the row's taught us something that the first guy in the row didn't, and that's not a bad idea. But I'm also the guy that's going to tell you, looks like you got a lot of computers, and I have no idea why. And that's, I'm just that guy.
I've got a question on that. Do the other counties you service have a nursing home?
Not that I've asked.
Well, I mean...
Not the two that I use for this example, that's for sure.
Okay, well, I mean, when I've read the email and what you said with your precursory look, and you admit that that's very light, it seems like you had definite judgment calls that were basically stripping the, the computers down from offices that the commission has approved. I mean, it was the commission that has approved computers at the nursing home, but you was saying, well, you need to take them away, and make them, well, yeah, you need to remove them from the county. But you as a, you're saying, well, you need to take them away and make them, well, yeah, you, you need to remove them from the county inventory. That's.
I think he's comparing apples to apples that way.
Well, but wouldn't you compare prices on what, something similar that you, to, instead of, he's stripping it down instead of pricing what we have?
I think I, I think I gave you a number that if you, if the.
Is that to you or Jim? I have this with 26 PCs and 35 phones at Senior Real.
Yeah.
Is that the same email?
26 PCs and 35 phones.
Yeah.
But, but your recommendations were to take, strip all of this down.
I, I don't remember that saying that. I, I thought I put a number in there and said, well, if you kept that, that, you know, if you were under contract for the service, this is being my estimate of what that should be billed to. Unless, I didn't know at the time it was county-owned, it was any, I, I just seemed like you were using it as a service. The county was doing it as a service too. And so if that's the case, I gave, I think I gave you a number, said, well.
1550.
The above city and senior center need removed from county responsibility. That to me, I mean.
Unless, not knowing if you owned it or not. And if you owned it, you're, and you.
But you already made the judgment, not without, I mean, with such precursory look, I mean, that seemed like it was a judgment already.
I didn't take it that way at all.
I didn't either.
I did immediately. I thought it was, it was, it was like, well, we've got this cookie cutter stamp that we want to use for, we've, we've done it in this county and this county. And now your county needs to fit that mold to, so we can price it out competitively.
I think more like it's a benchmark, like this is what you see averages in other places. And there's exceptions, you're going to have, like a nursing home is a big exception, it's going to make sense. What, what's the situation with Eppingham? Are those, are those computers that are in our ambulance barn stuff or is that the city?
Well, it's the city and it sounded like a good, but we should probably just, I mean, that's what, at the KCCA, it's like, get back to basics, do what's here, you know, and find the efficiencies and that's one of the things that I was impressed with, with your company. At the Kansas County Commission Association is several counties that have utilized you had nothing but positives to say. And it was the red flag for me when we talked about our budget number versus their budget number. That's, that's why we're here today of efficiencies of not only cost, but service. And then the cybersecurity piece that seems to be ever changing and concerning. Yes, that they're drilling down all of our, at, at every conference, so.
Well, so if it was interpreted as a, I'm only going to take this or would consider this account if you did such, I, I apologize for that. That's not the way it was intended. It intended was, I don't, this seems like a lot of computers that I don't understand.
Well, I mean, it says, for ACE to consider assisting the county in technology, several things will be needed. That's a definite.
And that.
Boom, 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 point, 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 there's six, seven points there. I mean, how could you not think that? I mean.
Well, I, I, that statement, what you just said is true. We wouldn't, I mean, you can, when you get to so many computers, you remove us as a viable solution. If you have, you, like I mentioned with the account that if we're there three or four days a week, we're not your guy. We're not your company. Because you have so many computers, it's, it needs, every computer has a cost of maintenance and replacement. And you, 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 you just would be removing me from any need to service you because you would, you, you are sizable enough and it's like, well, just, this is just informative, not, not any, we're going anywhere from a perspective of a contract. Because you, you can have, as I mentioned before, enough work from PCs and so on and so on that that would, it would, we wouldn't be a good fit for you. Too much work?
So part of your contract is you would rotate stock basically every three years.
Yes.
Well, every year, but a third every year or something like that.
We, we typically are targeted for a 33% replacement every year. You keep every, and that way every three years, you got to keep things rotated and under warranty. For critical component equipment, the stuff that we replace that's not critical, we move down to public accesses and things of that nature that are just there, if they're down, we can get to them in a day or two. But if it's, you know, the clerk's PC, we're, we're going to be. And some will, will do 25% and go four years and try to just extend that from a monetary standpoint so that they get a little bit more bang for their buck. You know, if you put to, we, we like to have UPSs on all our PCs. We like to, we like the power to be filtered. We don't want to plug directly in an outlet. We don't do power strips. We like battery backups so that clean power goes to the PC. That seems to extend the life and reduce the call, the, the issues. Because you can't, it's not like you could come in here today and say, I'm not going to, I don't like that electric company and they, they, they don't provide you clean power all the time. You can't switch it. So, but you can put a device in between you and the electric company that's cleaner. So yes, depending upon the situation, servers, we don't usually mess around with because they're critical. We're three years, they're on rotation, they're in the budget. It's a number you can factor. PCs for critical are typically line itemed and, and budgeted for replacement in three to four years. But, and that, whether, I mean, that's, that's the five guy analysis that you could, I'll tell you, I'd give five, six, great. If you, you got the time to mess with it and it's, then I understand. Especially if you have the staff, you can do it. We're just not that company. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. Just like our servers, we like to schedule the downtime. We like, that's versus coming in on a Monday morning and finding out your servers are down. And then you're in, you're scattering, trying to, we'd much rather have it know that you're in your fourth year, July, whatever, June, whatever, we're going to come in and replace that. Do all the preliminary checks on the vendors that have to be contacted and make sure they're aware and data's transferred and so on, so on, so on. Versus coming in and saying, boy, I hope everyone's available for a new server today.
Do you require your staff to uphold like a response time commitment? Because that's another thing as far as efficiency of services that, like, if we did change sometime down the road, like that's something that, change is hard, especially when you've been doing it the same way for a decade or more. And I know that our, the service that we get is really, really good. So I think that would be a fear of just response time commitment that if I put a ticket in and it's your ticket versus our ticket, what that response time looks like. Or, I mean, communication's huge. So just curious if, if it's like immediate to give.
Great question. I talked to the county attorney a little bit about that the other day. There was some nervousness and I, I'm sure that this was really, really preliminary. There was nothing being decided. But from that perspective, with any of our attorneys, if there's, if there's something coming up, or district courts per se, I would, is probably a better, better way of putting it. If there's something unique coming up, they'll usually let us know. We got a last minute deal just this week for Anderson because they needed a translator. And we had to put together a solution real quick so the translator could translate for the, in the trial. But most of the time, we know that there's something happening that, that we need to accommodate and we will be working on that in the weekly trip that we're there. Or, hey, I got a big court coming in and I'm going to, COVID, of course, changed. We had a lot of that kind of stuff going on during then. But from a cookie cutter perspective, there's usually a way that we're doing it that, for courts that, our emergency situations are very minimal, not that they, they don't pop up. Because things fail. I mean, there's, you know, equipment goes down. But for our response time, there's 20 plus of us. Where, where the, how we mitigate that is if today, a, we're scheduled to be at customer X, but customer Y calls because they're down and we've lined up all this stuff for the first customer to go. We're going to drop and we'll take care of the other one that's down. We may call the first one and say, because we're also a software company. We sell software all over the United States. Jayhawk Software is a, a company that we have, a division of Advantage Computers that we have them from east to west coast. So we have utility billing, fund accounting, municipal court, software all over. And our, those are, those are usually regulated by time. We have a response time in 30 to 45 minutes. But when you call us, you do get, you do talk to somebody and then that ticket's generated and then we, we assess the severity of the situation based on what's down, you know. So if you're, if you're calling because you, your clerk can't print and I've got a server down in another county because they can't function, we're, we're going to make the call to the server that's down, that can't function or whatever it is versus the printing and then get to the printing as soon as we can.
And then do your guys remote in then? Okay.
We try to do that as much as.
Because usually, well, from my own experience, it's something where it's simple for, for IT, but not me. So then they just jump on, fix it and then.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. And that, and, and from a good service perspective, yeah, you've, you've, there's some of those things that we, we usually have a, if we're not going to be on a regular week, we usually like to have a point of contact and like, say, you know, we can, internet's down. Or I can't get on the internet. Well, that could, okay, so is the entire county down? No, it's just me. Okay. So now we're even there in a card? Or are you, do you have your own switch that's just for your network that's down? I mean, you just start to, and it's nice to have that something, not even say, can you go in the closet and tell me if there's lights on that switch? You know, and then you know pretty quick, oh, we got a switch issue, you know. So, okay, well, we'll head that way with a switch in tow. But just for the simple, I lost connection with my printer and I can't print. Let me jump on there and see what Microsoft update just released that just blew that up and we'll get on there and figure out what happened. It happens all the time. And we don't, we, in our, especially in our managed world, we don't release updates. We let, we let Microsoft release and let everyone else figure out what the problems are. And we hold those back and make sure that it's not blowing a bunch of other stuff up before we release those. But in that managed world that, that I talked about, we, something that we do that's, that need, I mean, should be being done is all the Windows PCs should be up to date, current as well as the servers. That's something that that managed service does for us. It, it, and third-party patch management. It goes in, reviews those and makes sure that all those things are current so that we have the best defense put forward from a current updated patch server or PC at any given point in time. Now, I'm guessing that's, that would be right now a responsibility of your IT staff that's going and doing those patches, those updates.
Plus, do you have questions for?
So Casey keeps using this $400,000 budget when the labor of our budget is only $140,000-ish dollars. So I feel that she feels that we can drop all of our licensing and maintenance that we pay each year for all of our softwares if we go through you.
What are those?
So for example, CIC software, which we use countywide for all of our offices except for one, that software is $56,000 a year.
Are you cloud or are you local?
Local.
Local. That's really good right now.
So that dollar amount doesn't leave. So then our Cisco, our, our website's $7,000 a year. We're still going to have that dollar amount, correct? Our ASA Firewall licensing is $34.60 a year.
$3,460.
So, so on the fire, or excuse me, on the website thing, we do that a little differently. We have some counties that use, I'm assuming use Civic Plus or something like that, that use that service because they, but we have, they do, they do a great job, comes at an expense. But in some of our counties, we actually do the, the, the design and development and because we handle all that, we're not Civic Plus, but we, we can roll out a website and then teach somebody how to do the updates if the staff is interested in that or has that skillset. If they don't, then using a Civic Plus is a great solution because you pay the bill and it gets done. It just depends on the entity of which they want to or don't want to handle it. Sorry. So I just want to speak specifically, specifically.
So then Cisco licensing for a few of our routers, $2,000 a year minor. DeliMC, which is how, we have a data array that we store all of our climate on and that's the maintenance and licensing for that.
Was it $2,000 a year for the Cisco?
Cisco for $2,000.
Okay.
But you have the sheet that says what everything is.
The data array is?
$11,000. So then our wireless license, we have a Marachi license or set up throughout our entire.
Good product.
Everything. So I mean, that's $3,200 a year. I mean, none of this that I've said so far will walk away if you were to help the county, correct?
No, that's, that'd be the same flip side of what she said if I was doing and you, and we were to part ways. We wouldn't, Marachi's a good product. You wouldn't just turn it around and say, hey, let's, let's throw in all equity. But so, at a quick glance, probably not, no.
I mean, so VMware licensing, $1,150 a year. Antivirus, $5,700 a year. We use Trend Micro. Worry, worry, worry free security.
No, it's a good product.
Go Daddy for our, our website's $500. We have a, a managing system that costs us $190 a year that just pings us or it tells us if a server or a computer or anything like that goes down. Survey Monkey, which we IT pays for the entire county, which isn't an IT thing, but IT pays for it, $389 or $384 a year. The speed test for, that the commission wanted done for all of our citizens, costs us $1,900 a year. Zoom, which CIC, or which the IT pays, but that's for the entire county, is $2,900 a year. ArcGIS, which that's a GIS thing, so we won't even talk about that. I mean, that, that's, that's all our licensing. It adds up to about $130,000 a year in licensing. But I don't see any of that leaving.
No, in fact, we, we would 100% support Trend. That's a good product. That's where we deploy at all our locations. Stands up well. It's got, it's got a small footprint. It's not a horse to run, so does well.
So then, I mean, the rest of the budget is $89,000 a year in computer, in server or network upgrades. So next year, we're going to replace one of our physical, we have two, three physical servers. We're going to replace one of those. And then we always move the older servers out to our offsite backup and stand them up there for, so if the courthouse gets flattened, we can stand up all of our county offices in a matter of 30 minutes, 40 minutes. And we have to replace our firewalls and, and switches and routers as they go into life.
They have services on?
And seven locations, I don't know about your other counties, but we have seven locations that are all connected.
You, fiber connected?
No, no, no. So two of them are fiber, three of them are fiber connected, the rest are VPN. And as our local internet provider is building fiber, within the next year, hopefully all of them will be fiber connected.
Anybody have other questions?
I appreciate this because these are things that as a commissioner, we need to be looking at and asking the questions. And one of the two things we'll go away with is, one, we'll look at making a change or two, we can pat ourselves on the back to know that we're doing it efficiently for the taxpayers and we don't need to. So the more information we can have and the more conversations.
I've got one more thing.
Definitely appreciated.
It says, services you see provided by the county that are not seen in other counties, part of that is the fire departments would, or I, I guess this is a suggestion that they not be handled by county? not be handled by county?
I just didn't know who handles the fire department or that that's a, we typically see that in a city market, not a county and I, I didn't know what the.
Okay, so are these other departments suggested that they go down? Because you've got HR department typically has five and they should typically only see one PC for HR department. You only see two computers in other counties for GIS and we've got twelve. So, are these?
Which I think that's IT.
And commission only has one PC for the clerk and not any for the commissioners. So, I mean, are these numbers that are, to get to the number you need would have to happen?
No, it was just a comparison of the fact, like, just looking down this table, there is numerous PCs in our commissioners in the other locations. The clerk, maybe the county attorney has a PC, but all of the commissioners, just, they're not, they just don't have a plethora of PCs that they're, because that mitigates or needs managed and dealt with and so on and so forth. So, we just, that's just not what you see in our counties from a, a commission meeting perspective. Not saying it's not handy as heck and great to have, I'm just saying you just don't see it in our environment. And that's all I'm pointing out there.
Okay, well, I know you had said earlier that you needed to get down to a, a number that your company would handle, the number of, of PCs. I mean, you're suggesting that strongly that there be less computers.
Well.
And wanting to remove them for, I mean.
If we were to take you on as an account, it, it would, I don't think the way with the two hundred and whatever it was computers, I just don't think that makes sense from, for us to, not, not that it doesn't make sense to you as an organization. If all those are needed and deployed and so on and so forth, then yeah. But from us, what the, what the comparison may be poorly worded was, we don't see that in, in the, in the instance that I'm giving you from an example standpoint of the counties that we're doing business with. We don't have this large of rollout in, just as this example is here. We just, just uncommon for us to see so many PCs in a commission meeting, just from that example. Not that you have to, for us to do business, you have to get rid of all these PCs on, and that's not what I'm saying at all. If it was interpreted that way, I apologize, but it's not. It's just saying, if, if, if that's going to be the, the trend of having all this and, and you're gonna need local presence for IT to be able to, to handle as many as you have.
Okay, thank you.
But based on your contract concepts that you gave us with your estimates, you're, apples to apples what we currently have, the two forty-eight PCs, thirty-four servers. Like, you're bidding what we're doing.
Well, so, I'm, I'm.
Or giving us.
I'm giving you an idea of what, on the bottom line, what it would cost. That's a standard, one day a week contract for us.
Yeah.
Where we're here one day a week and getting to acclimated and so on and so forth to what, what's happening. That's just for your information, that's a typical county contract. One day a week is where we are. And if it gets into the two and three, we're not your, we're not your choice. I mean, it's just too much tech that, just like the account I mentioned, you can get enough tech that you're just like, you've gotta have somebody here daily or two daily to mitigate the problems.
So, on the one you're talking about, showing up one day a week, so say you have to show up two or three days a week because, just on a random week, because a computer fails or something like that, so is there a, a trip charge for that over and above what this is yearly?
Well, typically what we're doing on that is saying, well, if, what, what currently happens, so we, today, today, let's say today was the day we're supposed to be here and we call first thing this morning or Friday and said, you don't need us? Nah, we don't need you, everything was good on my end. Okay, so we're not coming this week. Call next week? Yeah, we need you, but we were having a problem that every department has this, that and the other, and maybe we need to be there two days that week. We would just float the, the day that was for this week and be here two days next week and the, the contract would cost you no more. But that contract, that concept of that contract is, is at three thousand foot in the air. I'm not in the trench to see everything that's here to say, no, there's, there's no way that one day a week would cover the amount of tech that you have deployed. I can't answer that question from flying over.
So what would that charge be then?
Well, I don't know where you guys are at, but I'm not comfortable with no one on site. I feel like we should keep, like, there should be one person in Atchison County on.
Yeah.
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 If there's something on site though, they can handle it.
All the things.
I mean, yes, an employee.
Yeah.
Currently, that's how we function. They call and they say, we're having this issue.
That way they're not paying for that.
Tell me what the issue is.
One person's here.
And then if we need to go, we do. If there is fifty-two trips, just, it's two weeks in a year, right? So if there's fifty-two trips under that contract, and we try to mitigate them based on if we, if we're rolling a new server out, well, we're gonna probably be there two days a week. And so let's not, let's not go this week, we're gonna do that next week. But again, it's hard to compare when I have no background in what's, I'm just giving you what we have and what's working for us as a company. Give or take.
You're kinda giving a number basically, correct or wrong, but just from what you, the information you provided, you're giving that number, but without actually looking at building to building and maybe scanning the network, whatever you do.
Yeah.
Whatever you do.
It's impossible to know. I mean, for what we do, you know, like I said, using, the Meraki is a great product. It's the, it's the Cadillac of the operations for, for what it does. We don't, that's not usually what we put in, but we, we run, we run into it. But Trend Micro, if you had something else, that'd be one of the first things we change. We come in and say, oh, we're gonna roll Trend Micro anymore because that's what passes our scrutiny the best and that, that is a good choice. And so there may be some give and take where you do an evaluation, you're like, you know what? Eighty percent of what you've done so far, I agree a hundred percent with. There's twenty I don't, but give it or take, I mean, take it or leave it. I told you, like, five guys to give you four different, you know, twenty different avenues of which they would do or not do. It's tech. I mean, it's, it's all speculative to what that individual knows, likes, gets good support on. I mean, that's, that's a big thing, too, as far as can you call upstream and get ahold of an engineer when something's not working right? And if you have a great contract with the Meraki radios, then I get that. But everyone has, CIC right now, I mean, that's, we run across them all over. I mean, and they're, they like to push everything in the cloud. We stand pretty firm with our accounts and say, I think that's a bad idea. I'd still stick, I'd still stick with a on-premise system. Good, bad or indifferent, it's just how we, so would we change that? Nope. You guys are already doing a premise system that's the way, in my opinion, should be done in the way we do it everywhere else. I know you're an Interpol guy and getting ready to look at those changes and, you know, that's a big rollout, whether, which direction you go on that. We have Interpol and our other sheriffs and other solutions as well. That's, that's sheriff dependent and what they like, support they get. Interpol's kind of the old dog, but they do it pretty well, but they are the old dog. There's better, there's better ways to do it.
But then you're kind of able to make decisions on if there's a problem somewhere where you're gonna address it first, whether it's a different county or ours, if it comes to that, correct?
So say that again, sir?
So if there's a problem with another county and you feel like it's more of a severe problem than what we have, you will take care of that one before you will ours.
Yes. If, if I've got, if I got one tech left and I have another county down and you're just having a printing issue, we're going with the down.
Well, I'm not just saying a printing issue.
I was using this thing.
Yeah, but if we have something that's important to us, you're gonna choose which one you're gonna go to with that last person before you.
In, in a casualty situation, otherwise you're on your regular scheduled week, like, we, so that's the benefit of having the scheduled day because you can depend the fact that I will have somebody here that, and, and some of those, some of those requests build up and sometimes there's none. You can go back to Neosho, the county that we looked at or that's why I'm here and there's some weeks we don't go on. Everything's rugged. There's no need to put somebody in the building and build him when there's nothing wrong. And if there's something kind of wrong, like in the health department or something and they were like, well, can I wait till next week? Yeah, I think so. All right. So, it's just a different philosophy of how you do tech, whereas right now, if you've got the guys and they're sitting in chairs and they're ready to go and their call comes, you go, you got, you got people. So, it's just different philosophy. Again, thinking of a, we service the, the companies, the organizations that can't afford a sixty to eighty thousand dollar a year position to do IT because we do it for, you know, well, in that case fifteen grand. You're not gonna give my services for that county for fifteen grand anywhere. No one's gonna come in and do that. So, it's just a different philosophy. Good, bad or indifferent, just how we do it.
Steve, would you anticipate, if you did a deeper dive, kind of what a plan would be for reducing the number of servers or PCs or is there some way of assessing that? How much of a dive do you need, I guess?
Well, great question. At that point, it'd be so asking whys, you know? So why, that server exists, why? And what, what benefit do you get out of it? And I'd say, well, we don't see that. We don't, we don't do that because of this or whatever it may be. Again, is it right, is it wrong? It's probably right for an organization that already has IT because they can, they, they're there daily, you know, so it makes more sense. But where we're not there daily, it wouldn't make sense because we wouldn't, we wouldn't deploy that because every piece of equipment comes at a cost and a maintenance. And not only physical to replacement, but a cost of maintenance. And we are trying to, we would be trying to reduce those things so that we reduce our footprint from long-term support. And maybe that's how I should've worded it on there than evidently out or I did word it. But again, it'd be a whole lot of why questions, you know? Well, if, if this is there, why is that? And, and then getting that topo done where you're like, okay, here's how everything's connecting. Here's the topology of the network, the vendor independent mindset where you're going, okay, here's, and I think you guys got a picture of one, I can't really, I usually send them, where we'll go in, we'll map how everything's connected, what, what, even what port is on that firewall that's, or switch, you know, what, what is it actually connected to? Are you using that as a DMZ or are you using it as a LAN one, LAN two, so on and so forth? We actually go in and that wire goes from here to there. So if somebody walks in the closet, they know that it should be a wire from there to here and this is what that wire does and what's connecting. But, and like I stated before, you may, may run into a situation where I don't think you need to be a deep dive, just a mini dive and you're just like, nah, you're, you're way too much work, way too much tech, you, you're, not that that's bad, just because I'm saying it's too much tech, it's just too much tech for what we can do for what? As a service company for you. We are, we are a downsizer, not an up-sizer when it comes to.
So you wanna tailor our county to fit the company that servicing us needs, not vice versa?
Probably a combination of both, sir. Probably a little bit of both, where it's like, okay, well, we don't, we don't do it that way because of this and then somebody's gotta make the call and say, okay, I can see why, I, I, I can see why you don't do that. I didn't realize that that was even an option, like I stated when I first started. The flip side may hold true, where I walk in and I'm like, wow, that's a great idea. I think I'm gonna deploy that in my other counties. I mean, no, I, I've run across some IT guys that are absolute brilliant and you're just like, that's good. I've all, I've done the other two. So it's, you know, you just, you never know. You just never know. I'm, I'm guessing by the looks of this room, you've, you've got an IT department that does it really well. You've got full coverage. I'm assuming this was a Zoom kind of concept so everyone can see kind of what's going on. And that, I think you even had a Zoom contract or something in that, in those mentions. So the guy that can do the audio, video, he's got his mic hanging from the ceiling, you know, so people can hear. Somebody puts that together, you know, somebody designs that, makes sure that the amp is right and there's no, there's no feedback and it sounds good and the video can be seen and, you know, that's, that's good tech. If it works well and facilitates the organization and it's more than we would do. I mean, but it's, I mean, I don't have anything like this at any of my commission meetings, but that doesn't mean that this isn't perfect for your situation. I mean, I'm, I'm in no way trying to insult or judge anyone in regards to the deployment of the current tech in your county. Just, I merely compared what I have to what I can see and said, these are the, the oddities that you want, the things that we don't do, let's put that way. So to answer your question, I don't know that, how deep a guy would have to go or how much would have to be assessed, but it would be a whole lot of whys. And then in the, we usually do a walkthrough. We usually show up and actually make sure usernames and passwords are given and we can actually get into servers and firewalls and all those kind of things. And so there's a trust relationship that has to be established pretty quick because we're like, typically you, that's a, that's a, well, I don't know if I want you to know my administrative password. Well, okay, can't really do much, can't, you know, anyways, remote connectivity, those kind of things. But all our guys do get the background checks. We do a lot of sheriff departments and they all get cleared. Same, same scenario. We do a lot of sheriff ones and we don't try to, the more you put in, the more you're needed and maybe that's, I don't know, I guess the guy could look at that and say, well, maybe you're not doing the best for your customer because you could give them more and they could have more. I don't, I don't think I'm that guy. I don't think we'd be here without a recommendation because of that scenario, but we sure have a ton of references if you wanna talk to people and other commissioners that have been with us a long time, as well as cities and counties, just of course, sheriffs, blah, blah, blah. We do, we service, we do everything from an offering perspective. We do everything but copy ourselves, the only thing we don't touch. Whether it's putting in bullet, I mean, this, this is sound really odd, but bullet resistant glass for our customers. We've unfortunately been doing that for customers because of safety concerns. And I have customers that have been with me for twenty-plus years calling me and saying, can you do that? And the next thing you know, I'm putting in access control, which I'm assuming you have some, I didn't hear that necessarily, but I'm assuming you have access controls, something we are very proficient at and play. We do it from a whole door wall strike controller somewhere, those kind of things. Probably good coverage.
Thank you so much. Does anybody else have any more questions? Appreciate it.
Yeah.
We will get our heads together and be in touch.
Sure.
All right, next, Westlander Emergency Management Siren Battery Replacement Maintenance Purchase
Okay, so before you have the purchase order for the siren replacement, we have thirteen sirens in the county and we try, try to replace and perform maintenance on three to four of those a year. And so it's a legit neutral number. This year is siren nine, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, those are broken and Potter Country Club here in Atchison, KDOT here in Atchison and the Atchison Fire Department. So the purchase order for Blue Valley to come up here and do that maintenance is three thousand four hundred eighty dollars.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve as presented.
I'll move.
Purchase order.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
Oh, she's got it, I'm sorry. One in front of you.
And then.
So, was it two of those that failed? Was it one of those four? So there's.
Was it one of those four? So there's two, we did a software update. Oh, that was a software. We did a software update, Blue Valley came up and did the software, they don't have sirens and all that, and we don't pay for that, that's part of our yearly maintenance that we do, that we do pay for. And the software malfunctioned, so we did have two sirens that did not sound when we did our monthly test, so Blue Valley came and fixed it free of charge, and then we stopped in the following Wednesday.
Right.
And they did sound. So, we didn't wait a week to make sure they were gonna sound, though. We, we confirmed that they were going to sound that very day, but they didn't sound.
You did a silent test, which is?
Silent test, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, so, but we wanted to make sure everyone could hear them, so we performed the monthly test the following week, week again. So, and the sirens are tested at three AM and three PM every day for communications and functionality. And automatic, all those computers he was talking about, you know, automatic, automatic computers that are throughout the county, then to test those sirens every day, in the morning, at three PM and three AM. So if there's a problem, we know quickly.
Okay, I have purchase order four, six and a half inch Chevy Silverado running boards, in the amount of a hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-nine cents.
So that's the new rescue truck that was purchased, and typically, I would have to bring these P O's to you, but since it's out of ARPA money, that's why I do, because they're the
Okay.
Standing threshold, yeah, yeah, but since it's coming out of ARPA.
Yeah. Same with the bumper.
Yep, same for the bumper.
Do we need that to change to ARPA?
It has the account number.
Okay, so it's fine. So, so historically, some, they put ARPA up there, so I'm just making sure that the account number is fine, right?
But it already has the account number, one forty-three.
Okay.
Fifty-three, one oh five.
Perfect. Do I have a motion to approve?
So, second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. And looking for a motion to approve a purchase order from Emergency Management out of ARPA for the bumper superstore, a thunderstruck front bumper, and add-on a two-inch receiver for, in the amount of two thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Receiver hitch check, so it's basically a big heavy cattle guard, you know, with a front of truck. That also has a receiver hitch, and then somebody use that for anchoring, if you have to do high-eagle, low-eagle rescue, sort of rescue, period, use the front of the truck for that. And then, in emergency, push stuff out of the way. I'll make a motion then.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Thank you. We're running a little ahead of time, but do we want to wait or keep going with Joe Snyder? Okay. Alright, Joe Snyder, Roden Bridge Superintendent Agreement on Project Zero Zero Three C dash fifty-two fourteen dash zero one.
This is the replacement of bridge number two ninety on three hundred and fourteen street, three hundred and fourteen, throughout the course of Atchison. It's agreement with the state of Kansas on the local bridge improvement plan, and it needs a second chair, clerk, the chairwoman, and the other two members to proceed.
It's so loud in here, and he's like clerk chair, and then you two.
I think it's raining.
Probably not where I want it to be.
I didn't write it.
On the back page, you can see.
All three of us?
Yeah, plus the clerk.
Alright, do we?
Has Pat reviewed this, or does he need to, or?
Again, this is just formally with us agreeing that we're gonna do the project, and we applied for last year.
Alright. So, do I have a motion to, for the commission to sign the project agreement between the Secretary of Transportation for Kansas Department of Transportation and Atchison County, Kansas? For the Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program, Bridge Reconstruction and Re-助理tation in Atchison County, Kansas. Project number zero zero three C dash fifty-two fourteen dash zero one.
Also move.
Second, what was the, what words, three fourteen?
Three fourteen, four, nine, Lewis, Clark.
Oh, that one, okay.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
And I also send you guys the entrance covert application. So I decided, as much trouble as we've been having with everybody going through the address thing, to basically get rid of the, the filler. And with that being done, here's the application. We changed a little bit down below. For further information or questions, please visit the website. Wes went in there, put a PDF that, that could be fillable, so everybody can use that. Roger was on board with it, but just to me, it makes it a lot cleaner and a lot simpler for everybody involved. And when we get to the entrance part, if they have questions, they can contact us, and we will help them through it. So there's no dust control, there's no big road policy.
Perfect.
It just, I think, won't make a big difference.
Well, and then once they get ahold of you, you can then have those conversations.
What we need to, yes.
Yeah, you can custom guide, it makes a lot of sense.
So, we did that. We did training with the motor graders, with Dale Dorf, he came out and spent three days with us. The first two days were with the four motor grader operators that we have that are bleeding every day. I thought it went very well, there was a lot of new techniques that he had taught them, and hopefully it will show on the roads to come. And we had two, two other guys who were interested, so we spent one day with just those two in one blade, working with them individually. So I would recommend this to anybody who, who would like to have him, he, he will do that, have a private contract with whoever else. So like, there's a township that would like
Yeah.
To get ahold of him, because he's gonna do this now.
Perfect.
On his own, you know, I think he'll still work with LTAT, but if we need him to come back, say, a year or so, or whatever, if some other township or county wants to, they'll be able to contact him and work something out for themselves, or two or three townships, however. But I just wanted to see how it went with us, and I was happy with the way it went.
Yeah, if you have his contact info, tonight's the walnut meeting, and they were asking about that, so I can give him the contact tonight. Thank you.
And then I was invited to the Caterpillar training in Arkansas last week. So, the sales representatives for the state of Kansas, and each area you got all the county officials that took them to Caterpillar in Little Rock, North Little Rock, and we got to tour the motor grader and loader plant. And then they had classes, they did safety classes, networking while I was there was unbelievable. I'm gonna tell you right now, there's a couple of counties that have switched from number two fuel to number one fuel, and it's made a huge difference in their depth. And I think that's something that, it's gonna cost us a little bit more, but if we're spending three or four hundred thousand dollars for a piece of equipment, is it really costing us? And I think that's something I, I want to look into. We're gonna look into getting our tanks checked, getting them cleaned, if they need to be cleaned or replaced. So, but it was very good network, because you get to talk to a lot of counties, and get their input on stuff other than just Caterpillar. And then, when we, we went through the tour, they did a walk around with the motor grader, and they had a D three little dozer. They had skid steers, and they had mini excavators, and we got to get on and operate and run them. But I thought, it was a very good class. I would recommend if they do, they can maybe be sending one or two of my other people, so they can go in and see how it's done and learn. And they also have plus-on safety, and then they brought in buying through governmental pricing, or like Sourcewell, there's two or three different types. And I would like for them, if you guys are willing, to have them come in and talk to you, so they can explain to you the differences in purchasing, so we don't have to do the three bids on everything. We can build the piece of equipment that fits us, not necessarily, I found on some state bid stuff, a lot of it's as cheap as can be. But then there's also stuff we don't need that the state uses. But if you guys are interested, I will get ahold of them, and I'll have them come to a meeting and kind of explain to you how it works, and how it can benefit us.
It's still government pricing though?
Yeah, yeah, but it's already been bid out.
Right.
And that's, that's already been done, so like what I did on our motor grader, we did, or not, our dub truck, it went through Sourcewell, so we don't have to do the three bids, we can build the truck the way we want it. You're, you're getting what you want, instead of maybe what everybody else wants you to have. So, and more fits your needs. But if you're interested in that, I will try to get them set up to where they can come in and talk to us.
Yeah.
And it, it goes anywhere from, I think, from toilet paper to whatever. I mean, it's not just equipment, so. Any questions about any of that?
No.
We're, we're doing our best, we're replacing some tubes. Unfortunately, right now, southeast part of the county got four inches of rain yesterday, or last night, and things are not pretty, but we're out looking to see what we can do. And this right now is not helping either. I had an inch and a half this morning, but I'm sure it's probably two and a half or better.
Did it start flooding down there?
It hasn't yet. They're out watching everything, so. Everything, although where I got it yesterday soaked in, but I'm gonna guess today it's not. So, then I have a couple of P O's. One of, they're both for Schwab Eaton, the first one's for a hundred and thirty-three, for the twenty-twenty-two biennial bridge inspections, for ten thousand nine hundred and six dollars.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. One second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Second is Schwab Eaton, for fifteen twenty-twenty-two biennial, biennial fracture critical inspections, of seventeen thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Is that biennial over two years?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, didn't want to come off the times.
Case you already has.
These are my blue.
Sure, yeah, okay. And then, I did send you the picture of, we have another bridge here at my apartment. So, I've got Pat. Most of the information, I'm just trying to get a cost, so that, so that we can move forward, try to collect.
Do you, do I have a motion to approve the Schwab Eaton purchase order in the amount of seventeen thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars for fifteen fracture critical inspections?
Also move. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
Then next week, we'll have a bid opening for the job on three ten, site number one, three H S. If anybody has any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you. Alright, the next or, or item on the agenda is Lindsay Wood. She had, came in this morning to visit a little bit about the desks, and she had an estimate from National Business Furniture, in an approximate amount of fourteen thousand dollars for seven desks, two bookshelves, and two chairs. She went back, she was gonna check with NavRats as well on a quote, and add one more desk to that, so. She will be on an agenda for a future week. So, we're running ahead of schedule, I'm going to go ahead and move up the disposal order for the clerk's office. And we need to amend this one, the disposal order. We can vote on it, but it has Jack Bauer on it.
I'm gonna change that.
So, I'm looking for a motion to approve order number twenty twenty-three dash one. The Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County do hereby order Michelle Phillips, County Clerk, as per K A R fifty-three dash two dash one eighteen, K A R fifty-three dash two dash one nineteen, K A R fifty-three dash two dash one sixty, K A R fifty-three dash two dash one sixteen. Amendments thereto to dispose of records in witness we have here unto set our hands this fifteenth day of May twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. It also has Eric, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I got it.
So we'll sign that one, let me get it.
Obviously, I didn't finish it correctly, and I just put in the, I probably got sidetracked, working on five different things.
No, no problem, we have plenty of time, just wanted to point that out.
Nope, thank you.
Yep. And then, we have a proclamation, EMS Week proclamation. So, Atchison County, Kansas proclamation, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and the members of emergency medical teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness of injury. And whereas emergency medical services have traditionally served as the safety net of America's healthcare system. And whereas emergency medical teams consist of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And approximately two-thirds of all emergency medical services providers are volunteers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical service team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas Americans benefit daily from the knowledge and skills that these highly-trained individuals, and it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. And whereas injury prevention and the appropriate use of the EMS system will help reduce national healthcare costs. Now, therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, State of Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of May twenty-first to, through the twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-three as Emergency Medical Services Week in Atchison County, Kansas, and encourage all residents to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Adopted and approved by the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, Kansas, this fifteenth day of May twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion to sign and adopt?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. There's two copies for us.
What do we need for those?
I, I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
I, I just need to get the other signature too, so I'll, I'll take care of it. I just wanted to put everything together for it, so that I wouldn't lose anything.
We still have about twenty-five minutes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna run a round at this disposal order.
So my, what you wanna say, is that you, attorney-client confidentiality's not on here?
Okay, you want to do it now?
So, if we can, let's do it.
Twenty-five minutes, twenty minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll be when everybody's there.
We're twenty minutes with who?
With the commissioners.
Okay, just you? Well, did you say attorney-client?
Yeah. Yeah.
Attorney-client twenty minutes, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, Pat?
Yeah.
Thank you. So this is just the order that we approved, so we can sign this.
There was a county that had, with attorney, talk about hiring.
Hawkward?
It kind of makes sense.
Thanks, I'm saving it.
Personnel, this is a whole thing.
Can you add Mark?
I guess, right?
Attorney client for twenty minutes.
Yeah, right?
Yep.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at eleven-thirty a.m. for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged as the attorney-client relationship is allowed by K S A seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion, and that the Board come out of executive session, uh, eleven-fifty, uh, a.m. in the, uh, E O C one-zero-four-four-three, U.S. Highway fifty-nine. And those present will be the three commissioners, Pat Henderson, uh, Joe Snyder and Mark Jupler.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. We're heading into executive session. Okay, we're back in a regular session, and we have about a five-minute break before our next executive session. So, I'm gonna use yours. I know, right? Stacy's coming at twelve forty-five, so we can always ask her. Yeah. Until twelve forty-five, really, we have two back-to-back.
Well, I'll go in after the motion.
Cool out. Did you have these written down from the email?
Mm-mm.
Okay, I'll just share that with you if you want to. Twenty minutes. Twenty minutes.
I like have designated reader of the, uh.
Oh.
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at eleven-fifty-four a.m. to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by K S A seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B one. And that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee, and that the Board come out of executive session at twelve fifteen p.m. in the E O C at one-zero-four-four-three, U.S. Highway fifty-nine. And those present will be the three commissioners, H R Director, the Sheriff, Tom Weiser. Is that it?
It's all that was on the email.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, thanks.
Here's your next one.
I'll move the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at twelve fifteen p.m. to discuss the personnel matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by K S A seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B one. And that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee, and that the Board come out of executive session at, uh, twelve forty-five p.m. in the E O C one-zero-four-four-three, U.S. Highway fifty-nine. And those present will be the three commission, commissioners, sheriff, finance director, eight, and H R.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
Yeah, why, why is it Pat included?
When they're called, we all get the email. Hi.
Are you ready to come back?
Uh, yeah, yeah, he's the right.
That's fine.
Was Mr. Pontius?
He's on.
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, he's working on it. I had to get him on. He's probably gonna make that.
What's the next one?
Um, of the...
Oh, this one's next?
Yeah. Well, we're doing Stacy first. She's at twelve forty-five. And then at one o'clock is her.
James on.
We're just gonna wait for Commissioner Arribas to get back. Helps, like, when you have something to, exactly.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not mine.
Okay, um, twelve forty-five. Uh, Stacy Wagel, Solid Waste Manager, award contract for Scale House and Transfer Station. Thanks for coming back.
Yes.
Thanks for bringing Mr. Pontius. We had, uh, a week to kind of absorb, um, what, what we know. Um, if we have any questions for Mr. Pontius, he's available if anybody needs additional clarification on.
I'd like to ask about the withdrawal of the bid.
Hello, this is Joe.
Hello.
Uh, you're, you said you'd like to ask about the withdrawal of the bid?
Yes.
Um, what specifically would you like to know?
Well, it says right on the pre-bid agreement there that once a bid is in place, it's not, it can't be revoked for thirty days afterwards.
Right, right, okay. Yeah, and that was a misunderstanding on my part. As I said before, I didn't, I have never done a project without a bid bond before. So I didn't know that the, uh, I, I thought most of the time the A I A, um, contract documents supersede, um, uh, other, uh, rules. And so it just seemed like in this case that that was, uh, one of the, one of the things that since there wasn't a bid bond, then I didn't know how, how that would, uh, work. And like I said, I was told that, uh, by one of my seniors, that that was, uh, something that they didn't have to, uh, if, if there wasn't a bid bond, that they, they couldn't be held to that. So, so that's, so it's a, I apologize as a mistake on my part. And, uh, yeah.
No problem, Joe. We've had this happen before where we've had bidders on other projects that, um, that haven't, that have dropped out after the fact.
But they had grounds for doing so. I mean, I don't know, understand on what grounds they pulled out.
Yeah, they didn't give a reason. I thought he would give a reason specifically. Uh, all he told me was that, uh, well, what was in that email was all he told me. You know, basically just, uh, in the original conversation, um, he'd indicated he, he was, uh, uncomfortable with it. And then he indicated that, um, oh gosh, what'd he say? He said something in the effects of that he would check with his sons, I believe it was, and make sure that they were okay with their bid type thing. And then would get back with, get back with me. Um, so that was, that was the only response that I got from him was what he saw in that email, or if you saw the email.
But to withdraw a bid, you would have to prove that you had like a mathematical error or something, and was anything like that proven to you?
No, no, wasn't.
My question's for maybe for Pat and for Joe. So to give us notice of withdrawing a bid, does that have to come to the commission? Or can they go to the engineer? I mean, what authority lines we have? Sorry, John Spotters.
No, well, I think what the statute says is that just to the awarding authority, which I think would be the board. I mean, I think if a contractor thought that that was the, the architect or the, that would probably count or probably be okay. But, uh, it's, uh, the, the notice is to the awarding authority under the statute, which would be the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, so the recommendation, um, Stacy had given last week was for Perner's instruction. The transfer building, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, Scale House, four hundred and seventeen thousand, for a total of both projects, first seven hundred and ninety-two thousand.
But are we sure L and L's bid is truly not eligible for this project? I'm not sure it's, I mean, is it really withdrawn or not withdrawn?
So didn't we have a start date on there, Joe, of June seventh? So...
Yeah, the, the start date was, was, uh, pushed back like, you know, another month or so. The ju, start date was, yeah, June first.
June first.
And that was just to give them some time to start getting all their paperwork and process and to get, uh, start getting materials ordered if need be and such. Because what, the big thing on this one is the metal building. It's gonna require, uh, I think they're saying ten to twelve weeks, um, for, for lead time on the metal building. And so that was the thing, we wanted to let them get that ordered as soon as possible.
Okay. And based on his response to Eric's question, so L and L has pulled their bid, and we can either honor that request and move on to Perner's recommendation, or the thirty days, we award it, and if they, within thirty days, then they can cancel it?
I don't think they can cancel the bid.
You can't can, it's, they have thirty days after the letting, if it hasn't been acted on, but once that they, it's been awarded.
They would, right, they, then the next step would be for them to execute the contract. And I, I have talked with them about what their reaction would be to that. Uh, they were left with the, they were left with the impression that they could withdraw the bid, which is, I think, based on an incorrect interpretation of the statute.
Okay.
So Mr. Pontius, it, have you reached out to them after our concerns about the pulling of the bid?
No, I have not. I have, I've not talked to them again since then. I didn't know what, what I should do in this case, so, so.
I mean, why, I, that really surprises me. I can't believe that you had questions about the bid and you wouldn't even ask them about the reasoning or, or our, uh, tell them of our misgivings on the project, or them pulling the bid.
Right, yeah, and, and I apologize for that. I, I just, I was taking direction from above and I didn't, I didn't know any different. So, so I, yeah.
Um, Mr. Pontius, we have, um, a couple additional items on our agenda beginning at one o'clock. Is there any way you could touch base with them to, and then pop back on later this afternoon?
With, with Alan Ellis, who you're talking about?
Yes, that way we can make a decision in one way or another today, without another week.
Right. Uh, what would you like me to tell them?
Just find out why they...
He should give advice.
What's that?
You, well, you, are you, you're telling us that you probably, uh, gave them wrong advice, right, based on what you thought your role was?
Sure, sure, that's fine.
You end up said that? And that their bid is still live?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, and the county councilor will read that. That would be great. We would just appreciate to give him the...
He's going to call Joe.
He's going to call Pat, too.
I was going to call him.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Joe, I think our councilor's going to call LNL.
And then we have a couple more, so 1:40. Can you come back at 1:45?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry?
That's okay.
I just don't want to wait another week to make a decision, so. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys, appreciate you, Joe and Pat.
Okay, thanks, Stacy.
Thanks. All right, three minutes, I'm going to use the restroom one more time before.
Another executive session.
1:00, who's on that one?
The next one is Appraiser, Finance, HR, and the Commissioners.
That's right, that's a big deal for you. It's a free gig after the day. Dude, I like your earrings, that's pretty cool.
I'm just seeing what I want. Thank you.
Lots of circles.
It used to be Personnel Matters.
Non, yeah, non-elected personnel. Sorry, you got it. Oh, you wrote them down.
Yeah, I got that while you were sitting down.
Sorry, thank you. Yeah, by the time you're done reading, it'll be 1:00.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed to executive session at 12:59 PM to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA 75-4319B1. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and the Board come out of the executive session at 20 minutes. 1:20 PM in the EOC 10443 US Highway 59. And those present will be the three Commissioners, Finance Director, HR, and the Appraiser.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes 3 to 0. Thank you.
Thanks.
I can't do it yet. I couldn't remember how.
Yeah, I have to wait until I.
I didn't put how long, is it 20 minutes? Because I told that man to come back at 1:45, so let's just do 20.
We're going to have a.
Yes.
Okay, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed to executive session at 1:21 PM to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA 75-4319B1. The purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the Board come out of the executive session at 1:41 PM at the EOC 10443 US Highway 59. And those present will be Joint Communications Director, HR, Sheriff, Finance, and the three Commissioners.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes 3 to 0.
It was just taken from.
So, now we're back. Yeah, I would like to move that we move the dispatch supervisor's position to be under Sheriff Jack Lorrie's authority moving forward.
Okay, it's been moved, all second. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Passes 2 to 1, sorry. All right, it is two minutes, and Joe should be popping back on, I think.
Yeah.
I was able to talk.
Okay. We'll just wait for him to pop on so he can hear what you found out, what he found out. That's it? You're it? Uh, yeah. I'm going to read my questions to you. He's still not.
I don't have him on yet, Stacy. He said he'd come home at 1:45. I'm just watching.
In another second soon.
All right. He's on, you guys are good.
Hi, Mr. Pontius, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Okay, were you able to touch base with Mr. Carney? I know our county councilor did, I was just.
I was, I was not, I was under the impression that Pat Henderson was going to talk with him.
Yeah, and I do. And I don't know if you want to, if you want to talk about an executive session or if you want to talk an open session. I did talk with Mr. Carney. I'm taking it since nobody's saying we should be in the executive session.
Do you recommend we do that?
Could be what?
Do you recommend we do that?
Probably, yes, and it would not be a long one. I think five minutes actually would be enough time to do that. And Mr. Pontius probably should be, he could, should be included in it, which is allowable because he would have information related to the topic. And this would be attorney-client? Attorney-client, and Stacy also should be included. I will move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed to executive session at 1:47 PM for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, as allowed by KSA 75-4319B2. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion and that the Board come out of executive session at 1:52 PM in the EOC 10443 US Highway 59. And those present will be the three Commissioners, Pat Henderson, Solid Waste Director Stacy Wagle, and Joe Pontius Beazem.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes 3 to 0. Okay, we're back in open session. Considering the bids for the solid waste transfer building in addition to new Scale House.
Right, yeah, well, it appears for me, after talking with people involved, this is a situation where there's a bid submitted with what's known as a nonjudgmental mistake. And a nonjudgmental mistake is one that isn't just, it isn't just one on determining how difficult the job is going to be, or how much time or something it's going to take. It's leaving out portions of the work, or having mathematical computation errors, things of that nature. And it appears to me there's a reasonable claim that that's the situation here. And in that situation, the awarding authority, which would be the county, does have the authority to either request that the contractor verify their bid or to allow a contractor who's made a request to withdraw a bid to withdraw a bid. There's downside on both ends of that. Downside of enforcing a bid where you have a contractor who has made a, has made a nonjudgmental mistake in the bid process is that you'd be forcing them to, you'd probably lose money on the project. Also, may generate some ill will with that contractor and may have that contractor not willing to do business with you in the future. Of course, on the other side is that the project may cost you, in this situation, $100,000 more than it would cost with that bid. So, that's, those are the considerations really to make. I, my recommendation would be to allow the contractor to withdraw the bid under those circumstances.
And staying consistent with my three, two and a half, three years being here, this happened in one other instance, in a road and bridge bid, and we allowed the contractor to, that made the calculation error, withdraw the bid. So, for me, I would make a motion to allow LNL to withdraw their bid as per county councilor recommendation and me as well. Do I have a second to withdraw?
I'll say it.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye, okay. So, we're going to allow LNL to withdraw their bid. And then with that being said, the Perner Construction for the total amount of 792,000, 375,000 of Transfer Building, 417,000 of Scale House. Do we have any discussion before calling for a motion?
Inside of that, what's the authority on change orders? Do you remember that up there?
Well, it's set forth in the spec documents. They're certainly allowed, they have to be approved by the architect. Is there a more specific question about them?
I was assuming there's a cap on them. I looked at this back when we first did, I can't remember now if there were.
Joe, can you answer that? We did discuss that.
Change orders, can you just discuss those for a second?
Yeah, change orders, the process typically, when that comes about, you know, it starts with us, and we analyze the requests and deem if it's acceptable or not. Then we need to discuss it with the owner, which would be the county in this case, as far as if that's acceptable to you as well. And then it moves forward from that point on. Now, there, as far as a cap on change orders, I've never done a project in which there was a cap on change order. So, that's, that's where, you know, it just, it just gets to be a point of if there's something that was either missed in the documents or there was something that was unforeseen conditions that arise, those are things you just can't put a number to as far as that goes. So, that's where, yeah, change orders can't, don't really have a cap as far as what I've, all the projects that I've dealt with.
So, I've taken a lot of thought into the consideration of this, and I know this has been a goal many, many years and a need many, many years prior to me even being on the commission from the Solid Waste Committee, as well as our Solid Waste Director. They fully support this project, and I fully support this project. But with that being said, I know I've shared concerns with the Solid Waste Director that I'd like to share with the public in the fact that I feel the Commissioners, along with our Financial Director and HR Director and Department Head, should answer some of these questions together sooner rather than later to outline a plan. And so, how are we going to fund solid waste in 10 years when our sales tax sunsets? Because we currently don't have a plan. Are we willing to staff solid waste now with our key positions to transition over the next, over the timeline in which pretty much all of our key players in solid waste have the same exit date based on their longevity with the county? So, we need to have a succession plan outlined. Does the Solid Waste Committee need to be involved? Does the Solid Waste Committee need to be involved in any of this? I've spoke with them. Everybody's, the chair expressed that they're fully supportive of this project. I've been to meetings where there's been mention of shutting down the construction and demolition, which is a service to the citizens. And making this type of an investment, I, I want to make sure that the service to the citizens is the top of our priority list. We currently don't have a long-term plan for our tires, but continue through this temporary program to see week after week the need. So coming up with a long-term plan for tires and remaining a service to the citizens. We have over a million dollars of sales tax that's been sitting in the 897 fund since 2014 or before with no plan or additional conversations. So investing in our solid waste facility makes sense when we have the funding to do so. A constituent, a constituent offered me feedback after our last Tuesday meeting that I thought was very important to let the public know because perception is everything. And just because the folks in the city are being charged a solid waste fee, this has nothing to do with us building our building. This has been a, a goal and a need for 2017, 14. I don't remember what the dates were on all the correspondence that I've read historically, but this has nothing to do with it. And can we, so I would also wanted to see availability to have someone from the state or an engineer, whoever we need to visit with, of succession planning and looking for the future of if there would be room to incorporate additional space for our road and bridge facility at our solid waste site. Because again, the investment could be twofold as a positive. And then have a long-term plan, plan outlined for our recycling program as well. So these are all goals that I hope that my fellow commissioners will help answer these questions along with our support staff to, to really come up with a plan and know that even though this is a need, I think we can make it even better by having, having long-term, long-term plans. So, and then also Stacy pointed out to me on her solid waste plan, I forgot to read that part, that she gave a copy of her solid waste plan and it will be up for a five-year update in 2024. So this will be a great time to start coming up with the recommendations because there is a section five in the solid waste plan for future plans. So we can outline, you know, what we come up with next year. So it all kind of goes hand in hand.
Well, I have to, I'm respectfully gonna vote no on this. I think there, they, there's definite needs at solid waste. But the cost of the scale house, which is a 20 foot by 40 building, is costing 400 and some thousand dollars to me as spending 200,000 dollars on a Chevy. It just, I, I don't know what some of the other plans or that Stacy's, or, excuse me, Casey has outlined. I don't know what they have to do with it because a building that's been designed for a scale house, is it gonna be able to accommodate road and bridge? I, I, I just don't see the correlation there at all. If there was gonna be a plan, there would need to have been a plan that they would be together before, before you bid it out. So you would have a building that would be accommodate either both or you know that you wouldn't try to use it for both. Because now it's just wishful thinking that if you were gonna suddenly use it for another purpose beyond, it's not gonna be big enough for that. So we'll be adding on to the 400,000 dollar building. So I, I just, it's completely opposite.
Yeah, no, you're fine. I, I appreciate, see, the perspective means a lot because you took my comments that way. And I want to clarify that I just, it's a gamble not having a plan beyond 10 years. We have sales tax to fund it. We have facility needs, but we don't have a long-term plan of knowing what's beyond that. I just want investment in the county to know there will be solid waste and we're looking for another location currently for a road and bridge. So having 70-plus acres of one location, if it's feasible, that's, that's the kicker. If it's feasible, could make sense for, for long-term solutions. Again, it's, there's no plan. It's all up in the air. We don't know the rules.
It sounded like justification for building this.
No, absolutely not. No, this was just another thought of like what we're trying to do. But if we sit at a table and come up with a long-term plan, at the end of the day, it makes more sense than doing a project over here and one over here and one over here when we're not cohesively thinking through the entire thing. But bottom line, I have concerns. Nothing we can't iron out. We can come up with a plan. I just want to make it known that this is a service to the constituents and I want it to last beyond the next 10 years. So developing a plan is critical in my opinion.
I might just show him my chance to get a barb in here. This is another example of a comprehensive plan and a strategic plan both for the county, which to my knowledge has never been done. And it makes a world of difference for economic development and for sending a clear mission and vision to your staff and to the elected officials as to where we're, where we're going. So we can take one step towards fixing that by getting this thing built and get this thing off the list. That money's been sitting there for years. People have paid that tax, many of which no longer even living, and that money's just building up. So let's, let's get this built, start serving the consumers of today. And there's still quite a bit of money left in that account for future needs.
Because the bill, the money's there, isn't a reason to spend it.
The money's there, the money's there for a purpose.
But to spend it, but to spend it beyond what it's, I mean, it was, it's also a cushion for other department too, which is funded by sales tax. And to spend it all on one, in one shot is just beyond the peril.
There's 1.1 million there where it's been less than 100,000. So there's still quite a bit of money that'll be sitting there.
And also to be noted that this has been a need for
Eight years.
Eight years. So construction costs within the past eight years have been a heck of a lot less than this, but we haven't got there. So we made it here and yes, it's in a fortunate time in the market, but construction costs are, are what they are.
I call this the, there's always the opportunity prices, opportunity costs. This is a, the price of indecision.
Yep, I agree.
This, this, this is why it's worth paying more. This should have been decided a long time ago.
Okay, I would look for a motion to approve Herner Construction for the transfer building addition and new scale house at Axerson County Solid Waste in the amount of 792,000 dollars. Do I have a motion to approve?
It's been moved.
It's been moved. Do I have a second? I will second. It's been moved and it's seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, it passes two to one. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Joe, by the way. Thank you, Pat, for extending this and getting the answers that we needed today. And thank you Stacy for, oh, tires. You want to talk tires. I just need to, first of all, sorry, I want to give a shout out to Stacy because as a department head dealing with this tire need and ever-changing need, she's done phenomenal at accommodating the constituents. And I appreciate you.
And my staff.
And, and your staff. Absolutely. But she's my point of contact and so, kudos. Like I want to give you credit where credit's due because, you know, folks are loaded up and, you know, we've had a tweak here and there, but it's working. And the 22 people by 10:50 or something last Thursday that we serviced, and it's just like, it's incredible. And this week, this Thursday is our last temporary. So are we willing to continue this for, I mean, it's cleaning up hundreds of tires.
More every Thursday.
Yeah.
I think our total last Thursday was 38 loads.
And to me, that's a win for Axerson County to accommodate citizens.
And some of them are five.
Right.
But some of them are.
A trailer.
All right, in commercial?
No, I made the executive choice not to take the commercial.
Just res, just residents.
I don't mean ag like commercial. I mean just say, yeah, I mean.
Just, just individuals, just general public.
Yeah, I think I'm okay extending it for a little while, but I want to have, we need some kind of a long-term, like what's gonna be the?
It's 2,000 dollars a trailer. We've had six, starting with the first Friday and Saturday, six total. I mean, that's an expense that wasn't built into the budget at the time.
Yeah, and the trailer could just sit there all week and once it's full, you're just done. So it's not just on Thursday.
Basically what we're doing. I mean.
So it's not just, it's just Thursday right now, but.
Right.
That's the only concern I've had is if it could be available on Saturday, if it could be available.
That's been a lot of feedback I've gotten.
You know, we were gonna hire somebody and we haven't had a whole lot of luck. We've had, I think Jody can tell on this, but I think we had two actual applications and about four that came in on indeed. And they weren't really, we haven't got anybody hired yet. We're doing pretty good on the Thursdays just with the staff that I have because Thursdays are a slow day from everything else.
It was.
Well, yeah, it's not anymore, but it was. I am willing to add Saturday with the staff that I have. And then if we get somebody hired, maybe add some other days. But I think right now we can handle Thursday and Saturday.
That would be.
And really, Saturday's what people want.
Yep.
And it, and it's gonna fill fast on a Saturday. Because Thursday, it fills fast, but those are people who are able to not be at work or whatever the, you know, whatever the reason.
They figure out some way to get them there, yeah.
There's a lot of people that are waiting for a Saturday, for that to happen on Saturdays.
You're gonna have two trailers a week if it fills on Thursday?
Well, that's for somebody to make a decision. If, if we're gonna do one trailer a week and it's full when it's full.
That's where we're gonna get into problems.
Yeah, so should we just switch to Saturday? Because I've had a lot of people, people work Monday through Friday.
Yeah.
And the Saturday would accommodate, you know, folks that.
And my fear for that is we've done the advertising.
Yeah.
And people know Thursday, so now I'm gonna get a lot of loads on. If we switch it to Saturday, yeah, people are gonna be thrilled to have Saturdays, but they're still gonna be showing up on Thursday and that empty trailer's gonna be sitting over there. And they're gonna be like, oh, I can see it right there. How come I can't just, I drove all the way over here. I loaded them all up. I mean, you hear all of those things. And I don't like the idea of two full trailers a week either, but that's what's gonna happen.
Unless there's a, unless we have a finite date, we offer it for so long, in that plan, we would, you know, know that we're gonna do it one more month and then that's it possibly. I'm, I'm just throwing out a scenario.
But word goes by mouth. I mean, no matter how much you put it out, social media and all of those things, word goes by mouth. And people catch on and pass that. And I'll tell you what, three years from now, they'll say, don't you only take those on Thursday?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's just how it is. That's just human nature.
Maybe we should do a lot of Thursdays for another month or so and.
I would hope to think, although I know it better, that it would slow down eventually. But I, I know that's not gonna happen because you can drive around and see tires everywhere.
Yeah, I don't think if it slows down, then on Thursdays it gets only half full, then on Saturday you can top it off. You know, same trailer. I'm saying, I wonder if we're gonna see if that will.
People show up on Saturday and if the trailer's full, they're not gonna take them home.
Well, that's the problem we're already having. They show up on Thursday, you know, and the trailer's full, sorry, huh? They drive away and you might not see them next Thursday because they're already thrown off somewhere.
But you have seen them back on the next Thursday.
Well.
Because I know some that have done that.
Probably, yeah. Yeah, there have been some that came back. Why was here last week and you were full? There are some honest people, but there are some non-honest people too.
So in order to hit that point where it's not, should we do more than one? I mean, to, if the goal is to, to get caught up.
Well, I think the question is how much are we willing to spend? Because this is gonna go into thousands and thousands of dollars.
Well, it's summertime. It's gonna be that time where it's cleanup time and it's easier to do this stuff. So maybe, maybe we do a couple of Saturdays on addition, but I, I have a hard time doing two trailers a week for a long time.
Well, and so that's where we gotta come up with a plan. Because it, I mean, to me, it feels good to use the sales tax money that the constituents pay to give them a resource. Like that.
Absolutely.
We're sitting here talking about the million-dollar fund and like, it's, there's a need. I mean, you're seeing 38 in one day. People use the trailer. Like, that's a, that's a good thing, in my opinion. Is the sales tax people pay, give it back to them in a service. So, and to get caught up. Because most of the people with those big loads are getting caught up. They've had them on their farm for years.
Ever.
Yeah, ever. And they're coming and they're preservative and.
And the other part of this, which has been in the back of my mind all the time is, I've been here 28 years and for 28 years, we've offered a free service for tires.
Everywhere else charges.
At, at, at the tire monofil in Eppingham has been open for 30 years. You have a free service. You have to cut sidewalls out. And I understand that's not an easy job. I understand that. But we've had that free service and, and the goal of that was to fill up that hole and finish that off 30 years ago when it, when it stopped being a landfill and became a tire monofil. And so a little bit of me would like to get people to go over to that tire monofil. I don't know how you do that. If you're offering it free over here with rims on it and throw it in there, I, I don't know how you get somebody to take it to Eppingham.
You're gonna have to have a service.
But we're already offering a free service to this. And now we're talking about spending money on something that we have offered a free service for 30, 28 years.
You gotta have blades. I mean.
And I understand that. People, yes, I know, but.
And we would like for that to be filled so that we don't have to, if we decided to close it, we will have to haul dirt in to finish it off.
Right.
And so we'd rather to see it filled with tires and all we have to do is the cap and then we're done with. And then at that time, maybe not offer that service anymore because there's not a lot of people who are utilizing that free service out there.
Well, I don't think they have the capability to cut them down. I know I don't. Like, we get them out. I mean, I tried, but I'm not good.
I would say we get eight or 10,000 a year out there. And the goal is that, yeah, like Eric said, finish that off and cap it off and be done with it. But if you're offering a free service in town, it's free to them. It's not free to us. Why would you use that at all, ever? You know, even the people that are using it now, yeah, I'm not gonna cut my tire. I'm gonna take it in there on Thursday and throw it in there for free and easy.
So can we offer a service of cutting them down for people if they bring them? Well, I'm just saying, when we're, because that's the reason people aren't using it. I mean, if, if the goal is to fill that, then we need to help them by like, because the little folks I help.
Commercial tire cutter is 27,000 dollars. I looked it up the other day just out of curiosity. A commercial tire cutter to where if they brought it in.
Spins right around.
Kind of.
Cool.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
It makes it not a box knife job, you know?
That's right.
Put it in there and send it through, which is, we've, we've. Well, however, I mean, there are smaller options. You know, 27,000 dollars is a, is kind of a commercial tire cutter thing.
That's crazy.
There again, we're trying to hire and.
You say sidewalls out, but the tires is cut in half.
Has to be either quartered, four pieces.
Quartered, okay.
Four pieces or the sidewalls cut out. So it doesn't hold water supposedly.
Yeah.
And full ones, full tires will, all tires will work their way to the top eventually, kind of, just.
Really?
They just kind of do. Even after it's, even that capped part of the landfill, they'll kind of work their way to the top. So that keeps them a little flatter, a little lower. I don't know, just something I wanted to throw out there. I don't know where that fits into the solution, but.
Well, so that's one of the things. So once it's full, then what?
Then we cap it and it's probably 100 years, 50 or 100 years that it has to be capped with, with care before you can sell it, build on it. It has to be amber waves of green for at least 50 years, I think. Which so does everything around it. So does what the old landfill was, but we're 30 years into that 50, you know, so.
So once, how many more tires do you think it can?
Well.
I'm just wondering, does it?
That's, oh gosh, that's a guess.
Justifying.
We've still got a substantial hole there, but I'd say five to seven years if we continue taking them as we have in the past. If the people that are taking them out there decide to take them to town instead, that hole could stay exactly the way it is forever. Because like I said, why would you cut the sidewalls out and take it here if you could take it there for, but.
So what if we had a commercial tire cutter at the transfer station? And the ones that bring tires in that don't have rims and all that, they can just stack them and then just be cut as we can and throw them into.
Be careful with the stacking.
Whatever, okay, just.
Right, yeah.
We create, they go pile over here.
And then we would haul too.
And just.
We would have to hold them to Effingham.
Yeah, but at least we can get that thing filled in.
Or, or we could, um, or it could be an Effingham thing.
Yeah.
I would make the trip out.
Yeah, they wouldn't.
We can divert people out there.
He's already open on Wednesdays and Saturdays.
Yeah, take those over there and they'll cut them. Something to really think about.
And then you could just use a trailer sitting there for the rimmed ones, like.
Right.
Cause.
Cause that lowers your.
And then you wouldn't be go, yeah.
Two grand every two weeks and.
Cause majority are, don't have rims on them that are coming in.
Majority, majority.
That's gonna seem pretty, then he ramps here. Well, but it's, it's, it's been a good thing for solid waste to be able to have a little conversation about it. We could harp it by the twenty-seven thousand dollar cutter.
I mean, seriously though.
I mean, I mean.
It would, it would be a service to the citizens and help her goal of filling it up. Like to me, those are the, yes. I would be a yes on this. And then people can utilize it on a Saturday, take them out there, drop them off, you know, the cutter does its thing. You'd have your trailer sitting there for the rimmed ones, which won't fill up fast. I mean.
What are the rules if you have a cutter out there and you see, let's just say you have five thousand tires show up one day? I mean, can you pile them up while you cut them in the next few days? Is it three days? Okay, three days of time left.
It's three days, which I would hate to go into overtime.
No, no, no.
For something like that. I mean, I got a guy out there on site Wednesday and Saturday that could have something to do. That would be okay, you know? He can man the trash at the same time he was doing that. Um, but if he got a influx of, like, could happen, you know?
Could happen.
Yeah, then you might be sending somebody out there on Monday or Tuesday because it's gotta be cleaned up in three days.
Or you may have to just tell them, bye, we're done for the day. You can't take anymore. You just have to do it.
Whatever we decided the rules were, I guess, yeah. And I would need to check some of those things with the state. I have talked to them a little bit about.
It seems like long-term, that makes more sense than just paying somebody two grand a week forever.
Well, two grand a week don't take very long.
Thirteen and a half trailers. No, I want to do like thirteen and a half trailers.
And they would have their own trailer or something to put in. So if you're out there already, you just.
Well, if, if it makes it an Effingham thing, we wouldn't have to transport them. That would be better.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's not that much farther to drive to have that amenity in our county.
Well, some of those people are coming from out there anyway.
They're right.
You know?
Well, and even if they're not, like, if you want a free amenity, go out there.
That's where it's at.
Yeah, it's a service, it's a service.
That's where the tires have been all along and.
And then it also helps people for, like, you know, the ones that know, they can pick it up out of the ditch and take it somewhere because we have that, you know, it's like, okay.
Yeah, that's what's happened to me a few times. It's like, I'm tired.
Yep.
Yeah, see it laying there, yeah. So.
I love that idea.
Just kind of discussions that we've had.
You're in it by solid waste. You guys can give a little plan. Yeah, I think.
I feel like they're supportive of any plans that we, they're really.
Very good committee.
They're a great committee and supportive of services for the public.
So where are we at right now? This is the last Thursday. This week is the last Thursday. What are we gonna start doing next week? Do we wanna continue for another month of Thursdays until we kind of get our feet under us on this?
That's where I'm at.
How long does it take to price of the ARPA?
Got a purchase order?
What did you say?
How long does it take to purchase something through ARPA? You said the ARPA funds.
Oh, are we gonna do ARPA when?
I just threw that out there. We got solid waste money on this probably.
True story. Yeah. Eight ninety-seven, I mean, I would be fine with that.
And I, all I did was Google that. So I would definitely have to look that up and make sure that that's even.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure it fits the rules for the state.
Right.
Okay. And we have a plan, how we're gonna stamp it and run it. So make sure it's all thawed out and out there. Then we'll get the cart ahead of the horse, as they say, right?
Right. So, uh, so we're gonna go four more weeks on what we're doing now?
I'm okay for another month if we get this sorted out. What do you think, Eric?
I'll go for one more month of Thursdays.
Of Thursdays, okay. And are we still taking not tractor tires? We need to talk about sizes.
I think those are good ones to go out there and cut the machine if we start doing that.
Okay, so we're still just taking the sizes that we've been taking for the next four more weeks?
Yes.
I think so.
That one photo of those two big ones, like those are the ones we wanna avoid. Cause we wanna get our money worth on the trailer.
And the commercial machine.
But the grain truck sizes and the semi.
Cutter for those?
I would have to look that up.
See, I wonder.
Honestly, all I did was Google it and I did kind of read down through the description of it, but you know, it's one of those things you do in your spare moment out of curiosity, so.
Can we take the pressure off the two thousand dollar trailer? And then maybe we could put the tires in the trailer, you know what I'm saying? We can start sending more out there. There may be a way to do that down the road.
I have a question on who from the state. We were talking about coming out with you and doing kind of a walk around of the acreage at, at the Neo Show facility to see what our options are, if we have any options.
And we've done that. Apparently you weren't in on that. I don't, Eric, no. I know it was me and Wes and Joe and Kim. Maybe there wasn't a commissioner with us.
Yeah.
That did that about a year ago. And, I mean, the state's not gonna be able to tell you, you'll have to buy land out there if you wanna put something out there.
So up where the brush and all of that, there's no area for?
Well, up there on top where we, um, where the leaves are.
Right.
Yeah.
That's where we get our dirt to cover. So, I mean, if you put something up there, you're taking away from us, something that we need. Cause we need cover for the tire monofil and tire and for the construction landfill. And that's where we get it from.
Okay.
What you see down there where you see that grass that looks so nice, that's a capped landfill. So you can't do anything there. You, the berm back there, you wouldn't wanna get around that berm. Behind the berm is the, is the leachate pond. You really can't, I mean, cause all that's where the, where the landfill comes off of and you really can't disturb that.
If.
The old landfill, not what's under the C D landfill. You know, all of that has methane gas and all of those things that are state regulated.
So up where the leaves and stuff are, if you were to, it could be an option, but you would just wanna stockpile dirt in another place so that you would have that to.
You're gonna need a lot of dirt.
I, I don't know how you stockpile forever dirt, forever. I mean, that's.
Well, you needed to cover the C and D.
And we haul it to Effingham to cover the tires.
So but you, you traded that whole hill then.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's where we've been taking it off of forever and that's, and that dirt has been approved to use as cover. So we know it's the right.
Proctor.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't think of, I mean, the only really actual open area is there around the transfer station and behind the scale house and that's not. And the other trick to that is, um, any solid waste employees are supposed to be behind, on solid waste land after hour, you know, the gate's supposed to be locked. And that, yeah, you can kind of work around those kind of things, but at, at one time in the past, there's been discussion about that land on the other side of us, to the south of us. I don't know if that's an option, but that's for somebody who decides me to answer. I mean, I know when Joe and, and Kim came out there, you know, we went all over everywhere and, you know, and he's got his mind what he, this and this and it just didn't. It wasn't really anywhere out there to make it work.
Okay. So can we give you enough direction?
Stay as we are, stay as we are for four more weeks.
And in the meantime, you'll get the tire, tire cutter?
Well, and I would hope to think if it's not one of those backorder things, if we, and we're, and we're gonna do that out of monies that we have.
Oh, get some, get some bids, get some, get some cost estimates.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And, and make sure it work for all kinds of tires.
Right, like I said, the one I, I just Googled it and the first one that came up was the one I clicked on and I just kind of looked at it to see if it was even a thing that was even kind of feasible, so.
Yeah, I'd make sure that it's of the commercial caliber that can do, um, yeah.
Yep.
Which Centrilia, I think is where a lot of like, like the bigger ones. So they might have a brand or something for you.
It's already, it's already taken up there. They haul them too there. Is there a plant that like recycles them?
I don't know that. Is that where, is that where it is? I couldn't remember the name.
Yeah, so I've kind of been in contact of trying to wrap my head around this of how we can do something at the county level through a grant or something to fund some of this. Cause the State of Kansas is giving out grants for tires all of the time. However, that is to recycle them. So they're giving grant money to companies to make these park benches, to make playground, um.
Mulch?
Mulch. But there's no grant money to help entities.
Bury them?
Yes. It's all about the company doing the recycling. So I've kind of hit a roadblock with that.
So we need to give all those companies to locate in Atchison. It's Dr. Centrilia.
Have at it. I don't know. I just personally would like to see the monofil filled up.
Thirty minutes, okay, for a workshop.
That was the goal.
Thirty minutes.
Okay. Sounds good, Stacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, are you guys good to adjourn for thirty minutes into a budget workshop with Mark?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Um, any public comment? Don't see any. Um, I'd make a motion to adjourn into a workshop for budget discussions with our finance director.
It's been moved.
Okay, it's been moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor say aye. If they're aye, passes three to zero. We are adjourned at two thirty-three. Thanks, Kaylee.